Good evening. Welcome to the June 20th Troy City Council Meeting. We're pleased, once again, to have with us Pastor Dan Lewis from the Troy Christian Chapel, who will provide us with an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Pastor Dan.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we who live in this city and throughout southeastern Michigan continue to face the challenges that are part of our community, and we thank you for your promise to be with us. We ask for your blessing upon the council. We thank you for their generosity and sharing their time and energy to find the best way forward, and we pray for your blessing upon this meeting tonight, your blessing upon the citizens of this community, and may you give us wisdom, which you have promised to do generously to anyone who asks. And we ask this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Always nice to see you. Thank you for taking time out of your evening to be with us again. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Halliwellak?
Here.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Quorum present. And may we have a resolution to excuse Councilwoman Beltramini?
I move.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Resigned that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilwoman Beltramini at the regular City Council meeting of June 20th, 2011, due to a family priority.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we excuse Councilwoman Robin Beltramini for this meeting due to a family priority. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwellak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
No.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
And Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, we begin with several recognitions, and our first one is the Casual for a Cause presentation, and this time, it goes to the Troy Community Lions Club. So, Mrs. Stewart, are you presenting?
Yes.
And I know members of the Lions Club are here. I saw them arrive. We have a nice group of Lions, and it's my pleasure tonight, on behalf of the employees, for March and April, we collected $880 for the Troy Community Lions Club. There you go.
On behalf of the Troy Community Lions and all the charities that we serve, I want to extend my thanks to all the employees of the city of Troy that participate in this program. This donation is overwhelming, and it will be put to good use, I assure you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck for all the work that you do. Now, the second item is a proclamation honoring the dedicated volunteer staff and consultants for the master plan and zoning ordinance, and I'm going to go down to the front mike and then call those people forward. Every once in a while, the city council is honored to do something very special, and you're going to see by this recognition tonight why this is a very special evening in the history of Troy for recognition of the following individuals. So if Mary Curwen would step down from here, because she served on planning commission when the master plan was being developed, and Mark Miller with Planning Department, can you come on over too? And we have Mike Hudson, who is the Chair of the Planning Commission, Mark Maxwell, who's the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, Don Edmonds, member of the Planning Commission, John Tagle, member of the Planning Commission, Phil Sanzika, member of the Planning Commission, Tom Stratt, member of the Planning Commission, Tom Crent, member of Planning Commission, Bob Schultz is a member of the Planning Commission, but he had a work commitment and won't be here tonight, but he will be receiving one of these and be honored. We have, is Mark Fleck present? I understand that he was going to come. He served on Planning Commission at the time, but perhaps he'll be coming in. Then we have Dick Carlisle from Carlisle-Wartman Associates, who helped us, of course, with this endeavor as our consultants, and Brent Savadant, who helped us from the planning, from the, yes, Anlon Allman, also a member of the Planning Commission, didn't mean to leave you out. Now Zach Branigan is, okay, he's going to get one too. Okay, now. As I said, members of council, every once in a while, we get to do something very special. It's not every city or the volunteers or staff of every city that gets to do what these individuals have done to help not only the community now, but in the future. And this is a proclamation to honor the dedicated volunteer staff and consultants for the master plan and zoning ordinance. Whereas on August 14th, 2006, the Troy City Council, in agreement with the findings of the Planning Commission, initiated the process of preparing the city of Troy master plan. And whereas the new master plan takes into consideration recommendations from the Troy Futures 2020 document, including findings from the Smart Growth Readiness Assessment Tool, which was undertaken at the beginning of the process in June of 2007, the firm of Carlisle-Wartman Associates Incorporated assisted the Planning Commission and the Planning Department with the master plan preparation. And whereas, at the January 22nd, 2008 meeting, the Planning Commission accepted the draft master plan presented as the working draft for the Public Input Workshop. The Public Input Workshop Open House was held on February 26th, 2008. At their July 7th, 2008 meeting, the Troy City Council released the draft master plan for coordinated review by our neighboring communities in Macomb County and also Oak County. Whereas the Planning Commission held the first public meeting, hearing, excuse me, public hearing, the final public hearing on October 14th, 2008, and at that meeting, the city of Troy master plan 2008 was adopted by the Troy Planning Commission. And whereas a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance regulating the development and use of the land was adopted by the Troy City Council on April 18th, 2011. The effective date of the new zoning ordinance was April 28th, 2011. This was the first comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance since the 1970s. So you see why I say this is significant. The previous zoning ordinance text had been amended over 200 times. And whereas the rewrite process of the zoning ordinance was a collaborative effort between the city of Troy Planning Commission, city staff, and the city planning consultant, Carlisle-Wartman Associates Incorporated. The process was over two years in duration and included over 30 Planning Commission public meetings, a zoning ordinance workshop, a Planning Commission public hearing, and a city council public hearing. And whereas the document will implement the city of Troy master plan and will accomplish the following items: Protect single-family residential neighborhoods. Permit a wider range of uses in most non-residential districts. Increase the potential marketing and value of non-residential properties. Establish three form-based districts in the city. Provide for faster approvals for many types of applications, and it will be easier to use than the previous zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Troy joins with the Troy citizens to honor the Troy Planning Commission members, Planning Department staff, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle-Wartman Associates, and applaud their dedication and participation in this valuable endeavor. Be further resolved that the adoption of the zoning ordinance will create an environment of investment in the city and provide landowners, developers, and designers fast, fair, and predictable development decisions. The Planning Commission, Planning Department, and consultants, as well as our city council, are to be commended for their foresight in working on the city's master plan and the new zoning ordinance. And this is presented this 20th day of June 2011, signed by myself and all the members of council. This is very significant, that our community has the new master plan and the accompanying zoning ordinance, which is not only in hard copy, but online for people to use. Many communities do not undertake these endeavors and have the dedicated, talented, exceptional people to work on it. And so, we felt that this was due recognition, and this is truly historic, that this occurred in the city of Troy. Thank you. On behalf of the citizens, I'm going to give them the plan question number first.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may take the privilege of chair for a moment?
Yes, I was just about to say, as Chair, I think that, Mike Hudson, what would you like to?
Yeah, I'd like to state to the mayor and city council that after years of work on this, I can state positively, the zoning and the master plan will be the benchmark against any community in this state if they're looking at it.
That is very true. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those members that were on the Planning Commission at the time that these two endeavors took place and weren't here this evening, they will be receiving their proclamation That concludes the special presentations, and so we go to public comment, and let me count to see how many people have signed up. There are 15 people, and so I move that we suspend the rules.
Support.
To change the time limit from five minutes to three minutes per person.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Potem Curwen, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Halliwellak?
No.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Therefore, I move that we suspend, that we change the time limit from five minutes to three minutes due to the number of people that signed up, and this is per our rules and procedure. Discussion?
Support.
Excuse me. Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Potem Curwen. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Halliwellak?
No.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I will call in the order that they appear here, and I'm going to call three individuals at a time, and get to the third individual, I'll call three more. So will the following individuals come forward in this order: Richard Peters, Ed Spillers, and Neil Yuzansky. Mr. Peters, you're first. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, folks in Troy. I'm going to comment a little bit about the library. What shaped our country in the past has always been our ideas, from Thomas Jefferson to Mrs. Snow to Susan B. Anthony to some of our civil rights leaders, Dr. King, et cetera. I believe that, as Plato, you know, the common good of the community would say, in my mind, would be the library, and I believe that it's basically the lifeblood of our community, and it sparks idealism of our youth, you know, not only from Keats to Yeats to Darwin to Boccas Cat, et cetera, and some of the children's books that we know and like to love from. Also, I've got a couple other issues here I want to talk about. One is Fort Wayne. I think they ought to reopen Fort Wayne in Detroit, and I also think that maybe they could use it as a UN Center for International Relations that could, because of Canada and the United States, and I believe that if money was put there, maybe for that, or maybe some other, that that might work. Also, I want to call for the reunification of China and Taiwan and in Korea. If the dictator of the South won't quit trying to pick a fight with the dictator of the North, maybe something could happen, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Our next speaker is Ed Spillers.
Good evening, council. I come to you today as the Vice Chair of the Troy Democratic Club. We had a meeting this past week and discussion about our support for the library and how encouraging we are about how the citizens have come to the forefront and brought a citizen's effort into supporting the non-enclosure of the library and supporting financially with a millage. Certainly, we didn't, the city didn't get to this type of juncture by any of its own doing. I applaud the council and past councils for a period of about five to six years that have been going to great steps to bring efficiencies to the city government in order to keep these services, given the fact that our state legislature has continuously taken away state share revenue, that's Troy's taxpayer money, to balance their own budget shortfalls. So, the Troy Democratic Club, on June 15th, 2011, passed a proposal, whereas the city of Troy has declining property values that have affected the funds to support services as we have had in the past, whereas the city of Troy council does not have the option of adjusting millage due to the charter language imposed by a charter proposal in 2008, and whereas we supported the February 2010 millage proposal, and whereas we supported Proposal 1 in November 2010, and whereas we support keeping the Troy Public Library open, operating at a level which will sustain the quality of services, and whereas we support sustaining the quality of all Troy services. Troy Democratic Club therefore endorses the library millage proposal on the August 2nd, 2011 ballot as a first step in saving the quality of services in Troy, and encourages every single citizen to vote yes on said proposal. And as the Vice Chair of the Troy Democratic Club and speaking for the board and our Chairman, Kathy Martin, we pledge our full will and fortitude towards hopefully getting this passed on August 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Neil starts, I'm going to call the next three people, please. We have Susan Martin, Marvin Reinhardt, and Belinda Kendev Menary. Go ahead, Neil.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmembers, esteemed city employees, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I wanted to come by and personally express my gratitude for adding the language to vote on the dedicated millage, library millage, pardon me. I have a friend of mine in the neighborhood who we were talking to, and I'd like to address my comments now to the folks at home who are maybe undecided about the proposal. I've been trying to get a little bit more informed as to the goings-on of city council, and I will admit, it's challenging at times, and you guys, I applaud all the time you spend, you know, I think it was a great example of the amount of effort that people bring to, for example, the Planning Commission and to rewrite all the zoning ordinances, which must have been a huge effort. And I really can't say that I have come to a great consensus on exactly, you know, the nature of every big expense in the budget, and, you know, whether it's a great investment or not. And so I was talking to my friend about this, and she seemed undecided, and I said, what came down to it for me is, you know, there may be a lot of uncertainty about what's in the budget. Most people aren't going to be able to figure out, you know, whether this item is really necessary or not, but hopefully, people can agree that this dedicated source, if they agree that we should have a library, then it should be funded. And so, you know, if people are not very happy with, you know, some of the decisions that councils made, that's their opinion, if they think that there's money somewhere in the budget. I personally don't have that opinion myself, but, you know, I respect people who have different opinions of mine, but I think the issue comes down to this: If we want a library, are we going to fund it? Because, you know, the leaders that we have elected have not found the money within the existing budget to support a library. And so again, I think, I believe Councilwoman McGinnis, Councilman Slater, Councilwoman Kirwin, Mayor Schilling, or Mayor Potem Curwen, Mayor Schilling, and I believe Councilwoman Fleming and Councilwoman Beltramini all gave us the opportunity to vote on August 2nd, and so if you want a library, you should vote yes, and if you don't want a library, then I, actually, I don't encourage you to vote, no, I encourage you to stay home and enjoy yourself and kick back, maybe there's some good movies playing, so, but if you do want a library, then I really encourage you to come out August 2nd and vote yes. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Susan Martin?
Good evening. As we approach August 2nd, we're still hearing a lot of noise and chatter about how the library could be saved this way or that. We're being told money is there somewhere, using some sort of magical calculation of numbers to show where it could be. But over and over, we've also heard and seen from our financial staff that this is not possible. We've also been told and seen the declining revenues from both declining property tax and revenue sharing from the state. Last, we've been told and we've seen how the only way a library can truly be saved under our current conditions is with dedicated renewable funding, not simply stealing from one fund hoping there's enough after three years to keep it up year after year. And so here we are, less than six weeks before the library could close its door for good. And in the end, it simply comes down to one thing: Do we want a library in Troy? And if the answer is yes, we have to vote yes. A no vote closes the library on August 12th. A yes vote keeps it open for five years with dedicated funding, funding that cannot be funneled anywhere else for any other use, for the library only. Using the calculator on the city website, I've discovered that passing this millage proposal means my own property taxes will be $20 lower than they are now. I could pay less than I'm paying now, and I could still have my library. To me, that's a no-brainer. I'll be voting yes to save the library, and in return, doing my part to save the city from further decline in reputation and in value. Voting yes saves not just the library. Voting yes begins to save Troy. For anyone watching needing more information, including how to figure out your own new tax bill, or to help campaign to save the library, you can visit savetroy.org. Wealth of information and links to help along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin Reinhardt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I was growing up, my father used to say, "Stay away from the people that smoke cigarettes, because if you're in the group, everybody in the group is stained." The same way with alcohol. But here we got the Troy Chamber of Crooks here. We got Huntington Bank here penalized for cheating people on flood insurance. Troy-based, it says. It was Troy-based, and I know that's a member of the Chamber of Crooks. Then we have Bank of America here, another one. The bank, in fact, that's the guy you guys are honoring for 50 years of chamber business, and you were throwing me out over there. President Obama says that this organization won't get any more money until they straighten out their business. And that includes the people you just honored. How can these people feel honored when you honor people like Bank of America that screw the citizens? And then you got this Birmingham Patch organization, and it's a lot of different cities' organizations talking about the IRS-evoking 71 nonprofits in Birmingham. I wonder how many dump nonprofits we have in the city of Troy that's sucking up tax money that other cities could use? Now here, the Detroit News says that Michigan needs immigrants. What does our Troy schools do for the 50 years? Don't they educate anybody? Why do we got to import people to do stuff when our schools doesn't teach? And I keep saying that, our schools do not teach. Here's an article saying we need immigrants because we don't have the brain power. Okay? And then here, here's a small article. The DDA, they're so financially great, they took double A-plus bonds and made them down to B-plus. And in this election coming up, the DDA will get some of this money that you guys are saying only for the library. The DDA needs money, and there's a solution how to fix this DDA problem. And I have talked to these guys personally now, a week after week, explaining to Troy why areas in Troy that are so polluted, behind Troy Beaumont, that I wonder how you can sell bonds to organizations like that. Now this city better straighten itself up, because now the Democratic Party has sent the Truth Squad to the city of Troy, because apparently, the city of Troy is nothing but a pit of lies, because the Democratic Party is sending out the Truth Squad. So I appreciate the Democratic Party sending Truth Squads to this lie-infested city, and they're making a big deal of it, by the way. And I do appreciate you letting me talk, but I, myself, want you guys to vote yes, because I do have a lawsuit coming up against this city, and I want to make sure this city has enough money to pay the lawsuit. So please vote yes. It's not too much money, but it'd be enough to buy a few beers. Now you guys have a good day, and I'll listen to, how can the DDA run double A-plus bonds down to B? You know, C is junk bond, okay? And then you guys up here saying, "These guys did great." You guys.
I excuse me, next, Vanilla, are you going to talk to us? Yes, come forward. Can you adjust the mike? Oh, you're an expert at this. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vanilla, and I really want to save the library. And to do that, everybody in my school wrote their And to do that, everybody in my school wrote their signature on this piece of cloth. Every signature doesn't just represent a signature, it represents all the care they care about the library.
Thank you. Are you presenting that to us? Would you give it to the city clerk, Mrs. Bitner, and then she'll pass it along to You want to hold it up so people in the audience can see? Oh, that is a lot of signatures. Thank you. I think a nice place to display that would be at the library.
And I would like to thank my principal, Ms. O'Hara, to let me do this. And I would also like to thank my teacher, Ms. Janicek.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from these three people, John Reagan, Jordan Kotobi, and Kathleen Welsh. Will they come up in that order, please? Mr. Reagan, you want to fix the mic? You have a hard act to follow.
I know I do. That was very well done. Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Reagan. I'm the president of the Troy Nature Society, and I'm here to talk about the development of the Troy Nature Society and what we have planned for the future. The society received indemnification from the IRS in September 2010 and became a Michigan nonprofit corporation. In September 2010, we began a discussion with the Troy city staff on writing an agreement for the society to manage the educational programs at the Lloyd H. Stage Nature Center. February 2011, the society held its first program at the Nature Center, Historic Mack on a Program. The children who participated enjoyed themselves and gained confidence in their learning skills. March 2011, the Troy Nature Society placed a charter membership plaque at the Lloyd H. Stage Nature Center honoring the 65 charter members. The society now has a total of 135 members. In April 2010, the society co-hosted the regional Starbucks company stores' first 2011 park cleanup. The successful project was supported by Starbucks, from Starbucks, by Stacy Fisher, a former employee of the Nature Center. We pulled garlic mustard and spread wood chips on the trails. In June 2011, the Troy Nature Society reached an agreement with the city staff on how the society would conduct itself in managing the educational programs. I would like to thank Board Member Craig Lang for his leadership and direction in crafting this document. I am here this evening to ask the council to approve this document so that the Troy Nature Society can proceed in the presentation of the scheduled summer educational programs and further development of the society. During the months of July and August, the society has scheduled public and private educational programs. Three week-long programs and five short programs developed from programs that the Nature Center conducted in the past thirty years are offered to the public. Deb Williams, current Nature Center employee, will be contracted as the lead instructor for all summer programs. The society is contacting other former Nature Center employees to fill instructional supporting roles and is also enlisting its volunteers to provide program assistance. The society has an agreement with the Troy School District to provide 10 educational programs in support of the Title I Summer School. This series consists of short educational programs similar to the ones offered to the public this summer and is being funded by a grant from Kelly Services Foundation and a donation from the Walmart of Troy. This effort was led by Board Members Carla Reeve and Dee Macker. I extend my thanks to society members Laura Tate and Larry Ledwicky for their efforts in organizing the program discussions and seeing the program development through a successful agreement.
And, Mr. Reagan, if you want to pass the additional information to another one of your members for time to speak after, I'll call on them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It'll have to be after I call on the other, yes.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to read some.
Jordan?
Yeah, Jordan Kotobi with the International Academy of Design and Technology. I'd like to read some prepared remarks. I'm here on behalf of the students, faculty, and staff of the International Academy of Design and Technology located here in Troy. We're proud to have chosen Troy as our location in the southeast Michigan region, and one of the reasons that we're so proud to have called Troy home is the value that Troy residents place upon education in the form of excellent K-12 schools, institutions of higher learning, and their library. Lifelong learning, as you can imagine, is a pursuit that is near and dear to the hearts of the students, faculty, and staff of IEDT. It's within this context that I am speaking in support of continued funding for the Troy Library. It is an investment in the continued growth of our residents and an investment in our children's futures. Continued funding of the library is a commitment from Troy residents that regardless of what economic conditions exist, we believe that education and lifelong learning are core to our community. With the projections from Oakland County, it will be a long road ahead of us until the city realizes property tax revenues that are comparable to the middle of last decade. During these challenging times, we must continue to provide funding for positive quality of life influences such as services provided by a viable city library. While we do not normally support tax increases, as a supporter of lifelong learning and higher education, we feel so strongly about this issue and appeal to all Troy residents to support our children's future by voting yes on the Point 7 dedicated library millage that will be on the ballot on August 2. It is critical to the future of Troy, it is critical to the future of our children, and it's critical to lifelong learning that the city continues to have a fully functional library for all. Thank you for your time.
Next, Kathleen Walsh. Before you start, Kathleen, I'm going to call the next three people. Alan DeGost, Dan Brake, and James Savage will be in that order. Would you come up, please? Yes, go ahead, Kathleen.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Welch. Sorry for the scratchy voice. I want to thank Mayor Shilling and the council for the opportunity to vote on a millage dedicated to preserving our library for the next five years. The library was a major attraction to my family when we decided where to purchase our home seven years ago. The $95 annual library tax that I calculated on the city homepage for my home, which is about $8 a month, seems like an excellent value to me for the many resources available to the, from the library, be it books, periodicals, newspapers from various places, and other media. And I thank you for the opportunity to let the Troy citizens look at that issue and have the money be dedicated to the library and ensure that it continues to exist for another five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council.
Would you adjust the mic?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Get my cards in order here. I just have a couple of points to bring up again, and I apologize if I offend anybody, but first point is, as of today, you guys looked at spending, well, have spent $180,000 on two special elections, $20,000 on a phone survey, and then last council session, you contemplated the idea of spending $228,000 on a two-year contract with an outside PR firm. How many elections do we have to have before the council actually realizes what the citizens of Troy would like? We'd like our library. And yes, I do agree that the city does need to be marketed, but one, how many families are going to want to move into Troy if there's not a library, if the library's closed? And then my other point is, now the fact that we have a contract with the police command officers, and they have a pay freeze for three years, why don't we offer that same contract or similar contract to the patrol officers? Because let's not forget, these are the men and women who keep us safe while we all sleep at night by patrolling our city streets. And then the last point I have to make is leading by example. Our top 20 managers took a 5% pay cut. How can they ask the employees of this city to take a 10% pay cut when they in turn have only taken a 5? I led by example, and I would like to see that happen as well. Thank you very much. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Dan Brake.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
I just took the opportunity to confirm the International Academy is a taxpayer-supported organization. I hope when you get to your response, you'll take note of what a taxpayer-supported organization is here doing advocating a position on a public ballot question. This, the library is an issue only because four of you chose over a year ago to make it the issue when you took the budget of over 40 years and chose to strip it from the library and spend it instead on your pet projects and on fat city benefits, including pensions that are double the amount that us outside of government can expect. That was funding that the library had enjoyed for over 40 years. You've proved since that happened that there in fact is no shortage of money. You chose, four of you again, chose to ignore Councilman Harrelax's alternative budget resolution of a few weeks ago that shows where the money is without any new taxes or without cutting other city departments. You've repeatedly refused to discuss my suggestion here, request, that you post on the city's website a list of city employee pay and health care and pension costs, exactly like the Troy School District posts for every single employee on their website. I think the voters are entitled to that information when we go to the polls on August 2 to decide whether you really need more money to fund our library. In recent weeks, including tonight, you've shown us again that there's money, over and over again, apparently there's money to buy propaganda to be distributed to voters and paid for from the fraud ballots that couldn't be touched for some reason to fund the library. You're going to propose to spend money to replace city employees who've taken the early out. It's a feature of the early out that you can't get it, you're not eligible for it unless in fact it's going to save the city money, and here you are being asked to spend money to replace someone. We're going to see another new city communication strategy at $50,000 or $100,000, or who knows how much money that we supposedly don't have, and yet we're told that we still don't have money to pay for our library. I submit to you that what Troy has is not a library problem, but Troy has a leadership problem. We should far more legitimately be voting on whether we agree with your decisions to excessively pay employees' health care plans and pensions, far beyond what the taxpayer themselves can expect. Troy does not have a public relations problem. Troy has a leadership problem. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from James Savage. And before Mr. Savage starts, I'm going to call the next three people, James Gricks, Linda Keima, and Jeanie Stein. Hi, Mr. Savage, how are you?
I'm fine. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I actually intended to comment once more on the transit center, but I figure that can wait, because I'm sure it will be an issue towards the election time in November. I'm assuming council will follow the usual pattern to replace some of the key staff members that we have lost, and that is to pay consultants to search for applicants. It seems that Troy taxpayers have become a consultants' benevolent organization, because whatever goes on in the city, it costs us to pay for consultants. And I refer now to tonight's agenda, and probably without reading the whole resolution, it goes therefore be resolved that the Troy City Council hereby authorizes the release of so-and-so to solicit formal statement of qualifications, I'm not quite sure what that means, request for proposals, a communication strategy in order to meet the city's vision statement and goals at an estimated cost of $50,000. And then in Option B, which is pretty much the same thing, except it goes on to say, at an estimated total cost of $100,000. And then of course, Option C is the one I hope you will take, which is be resolved that Troy City Council will hereby takes no action. If it means spending money that we don't have for our library or any other things, then we don't have it for consultants. I was thinking, if you intend to replace our financial manager, then I suggest that you look to our own community. You don't go to consultants, because it hasn't proved very successful in the past. We have seen a series of consultants, $100,000. A few years ago, we paid between $50,000 and $100,000 for a huge study on the future of Troy. And all these problems that we're getting now, and this is only about four or five years ago, none of these were in the study. So we wasted somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000. So I'm thinking there are probably many qualified accountants right here in Troy, probably some of them laid off. I know people who, four, maybe five years ago, excellent financial people who couldn't get a job. So can I just conclude one paragraph?
Well, Mr. Savage, your time merely is up. The three minutes were allowed.
Okay. Then I suggest you put a ad in the newspaper for these people and cut out the consultant costs.
Mr. James Gricks?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was very upset and disappointed that they decided to put a sixth tax question on the ballot this year. The last five questions have been voted no by the voters of Troy. To increase taxes in a hard time like this, some businesses, this will be the final straw maybe, and they'll move to Northern Macomb or Oakland County, where the property taxes are a lot cheaper and the costs are cheaper. We could lose a lot of jobs by this vote. We have a lot of people on a lot of blocks that have empty houses or on the verge of repossession, and for some of them that are just hanging on, this might put them over the edge. I know going to the tax calculator that a biased group put up, the city, the taxes will increase. I just can't see it. We outsourced very cleverly the golf courses. We outsourced the building inspectors. Why don't we outsource the library, especially the super-high salary of the director? It, to me, is unbelievable. I would hope everybody in Troy that can afford the tax increase would consider their neighbors who are struggling and vote no on a library proposal. We've increased the reserves by millions of dollars, more than ever before, for rainy days, and this is rainy days. We've seen a slight increase in revenues, and it looks like, you know, if everything goes kind of smooth, that we should see increases of more. There's even a possibility, Snyder said the other day, but you can't really count on it yet, that he's going to actually give more money to some of the large cities, and we're the largest city in Oakland County. So I just got to ask, why can Rochester Hills do it, but we can't? They have everything we have, the same size city, 10,000 less people, and they seem to be able to do it, but with millions and tens of millions of dollars more in tax revenue, we can't seem to do it. Put the books, put the checkbook online like the Troy School District and let the people see where the money goes. Thank you.
Linda, before you start, Roger Kowalski, were you going to finish up Mr. Reagan's comments? Would you come up next? And Ellen Huderek is signed up, too? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm reading Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Reviews has said it holds the keys to success for people in all walks of life. It integrates different responsibilities in one's life. The principles are meant to enrich one's life, and that we alone can open the door to change within ourselves. It helps us explore ourselves and our impact on others. It's solid wisdom and sound principles. In the book, Covey suggests an exercise. Picture yourself three years from now walking into a funeral parlor. into a funeral parlor. Walk into the coffin, you look inside and you see yourself. As you wait for the services to begin, you look at the program in your hand, and there ought to be a few speakers. Now think deeply about this. What would you like each of those speakers to say about you and your life? What character would you like them to have seen in you? What contributions, what achievements would you want them to remember? Look carefully at the people around you. What difference would you like to have made in their lives? This chapter made me stop and think, not only about my own life, but it brought to mind what's going on in the city. I usually read a few books simultaneously, and this morning I read Hamtramck: The World War Two Years. Again, something brought to mind our current situation and related to what I read in Covey's book. Woodrow Woody built Woody Pontiac, one of the most successful car dealerships in the nation. Woody also had a strong sense of community and was instrumental in building the Hamtramck Public Library Building. I'd like to also mention businessman and philanthropist Andrew Carnegie. From his early childhood, he treasured reading and used all means available for him to do so. Carnegie was an immigrant who, with help from others, worked his way into a position of wealth. He believed in society based on merit, where anyone who worked hard could become successful. This conviction was a major element of his philosophy of giving in general and of his libraries as its best-known expression. Back to the exercise. We have two individuals, one a local businessman, another Scottish-American industrialist, businessman and entrepreneur, one of the most important philanthropists of his era. It's evident after their deaths what people have remembered about them, what they did for others and communities. We don't have to be businessmen to do this. We just need to know what we're doing is of benefit, benefit not just to us, but others and to the good of the community. It's time to evaluate our futures, explore ourselves and our impact on others. We all have different responsibilities in life. What do they include? Let's enrich our lives and the lives of others. It's time to open the door to change, not only within ourselves, but within our community.
Mrs. Kaima, I have to cut you off. The clock didn't start up.
Okay, because I know I'm under three minutes with this. I timed it three times. As residents of Troy, what do you want to be remembered for in the future? Part of the group that caused the demise, or one who stood up for this city and fought to bring it back to the reputation it once had? You can do this. Take the first step in taking back our city's reputation. Vote yes on the millage. Thank you.
I don't know what was with the clock, but anyway, you want to start it back up at three? There. Okay. Mr. Kwolski?
Continuing. On August thirteenth, under the leadership of Board Member Tom Locozy, the Society and REI of Michigan will lead a second park cleanup. This activity is still in the development stage and will be announced in the newspapers and on the Nature Center website soon. Another ongoing project is the research and writing of the society's business plan. This project is being led by Board Member Danielle Todd and Sue Neal, Executive Director of Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve in Rochester. Sue Neal will soon be under contract to provide assistance to the society with a focus on nature center and community development, as well as nature center program development and administration. The business plan will be completed in early fall. The Nature Society will be hosting a wine and cheese tasting fundraising event on October twentieth. We hope to see you all there. This event will be led by Board Member Nancy Papet and Society Member Cheryl Davenport, and is certain to be a fun time. As you can tell from the accomplishments already achieved by the Troy Nature Society and the plans underway for the offering, the citizens of Troy, additional nature center programming, the future holds promise. We have a strong and diverse board of directors, a growing membership, and enthusiastic volunteers. Please support the agreement between the City of Troy and the Troy Nature Society for use and operation of the Lloyd A. Staged Nature Center. We thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Ellen?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I want to congratulate the Nature Center for a second. That's awesome stuff, and that's what Troy's about. It's why I'm thrilled about the August second millage. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for giving the residents another chance. I know some are frustrated and feel like we've done it already and the citizens have had a voice. I know many citizens who feel like their voice was either muddled or not heard to begin with. There was a lot of confusion, separating it out for August, letting it run clean, separate from the November politics of council seats and mayoral appointments and all that kind of stuff. This is our chance. Your last meeting I watched with great interest because you had a very serious discussion called About the Communication Strategy, which I think we need to look at that as phrased more as a marketing economic development strategy that you all were trying to contemplate and wrap your heads around. I thought it was a terrific dialogue. I understand what you're trying to do. It was mentioned that we seem to have missed the marketing bus, but I beg to differ. I've been involved in this city inside and out of it for a while. We had a huge old bus. It was decorated better than Palin is doing on her East Coast vacation. We had an amazing marketing team working together between communication and the real estate and development. We've lost those people. They left on their own, and we have half a person now doing communication. This is critical. This is a critical, critical thing for this city. So when people look at taking two hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance, it's an emergency. Our black eye is huge. It's not healing. The library, saving the library is one step, and we really appreciate the opportunity. I'm thrilled to be part of SaveTroy.org, a group of very positive aspirational residents coming forward. We have signs to support the library. We've already distributed all of them. Funds kept us from ordering as many as we'd like. Donations can be made at SaveTroy.org, and we would love to order more. People want to step up and help you reestablish the marketing flavor of this city. Folks keep talking about funding the library out of fund balance. That is so grossly, fiscally irresponsible and an idea to take something that needs to be sustainable out of fund balance. I don't understand that. Other cities are trying, are saying they don't want to be touching theirs to do these things, and we have a whole contingent saying this is the way to go. Thank you for protecting that fund balance. When you look at the three-year budget, it dips down below where we want it to be. We see it's allocated. If by some miracle, we vote this millage and protect the library, and we end out with funding and we discover it somewhere, use it for our roads. Use it for our marketing. Thank you.
Audrey Zambruski?
I'm sorry, I didn't, wasn't going to sign up and say anything, but it takes some people to get me mad to come up here. First of all, Mayor, when you're going to time somebody, have it for everybody. My suggestion is to scroll back to five minutes because that was truly the way it should be. Because first of all, you did a wrong thing. One time a guy was standing here talking at something, and the guy behind him was going to talk about the same topic, and when the three minutes went up, he said, okay, your time's up. And he said, well, can I? And they said, no. And the guy says, hey, he can have my three minutes. And you said, no. What difference is it when you turn around and tell somebody, hand that paper to the other guy and let him come up and finish talking? That is wrong. There's no difference between that or somebody standing behind you. And I warned you about this. You're going to get caught every time you do something wrong like that, and you've done it twice. Now, the timer gets up when you want them to speak longer, but when you don't, the timer goes off. That's wrong. And anybody sitting out there in that audience and on that camera, I sat at home and watched council meetings, and I can see the dirty looks being passed, the different ones on one side and everything at home. You see a lot more. You don't realize it when you're in here. I told people, come to the meetings. That's where you know what's going on. And that, and it's bad when it doesn't. Plus, I want to tell everybody, the salary of the director of the library is not bad at all, not for all what she's done. The last director got paid a heck of a lot more, plus he had two assistants at seventy thousand, which is a hundred and forty thousand. She makes a hundred and twenty thousand. He did nothing. I wanted him fired, and nobody would fire him. He sat in his office and just played on the computer and made, and he's got his pension rolling in nicely for him. This gal works a hundred and twenty, makes a hundred and twenty thousand a year, and mark my word, she works her butt off for that library. And no, I'm not in favor of voting yes on the library, but I'm speaking for myself. But she's a hard worker, and she's a good worker. So anybody that says she's not worth it, let me tell you, and you lost one of the best clerical people you could have ever had, like losing Tony. They wanted her to come to Detroit, and she refused to go to Detroit one time because she said, no, I like Troy. I'm sorry for this team, but one thing I hope that you're not trying to save money to get the pension that you people a long time ago were trying to get, retroactive and for an insurable clause that was in it. I still have that paper, and I will remember everybody and tell them, when that comes up, just remember, the extra money, is this going for a pension for all the people that were council people and mayors, and it goes back to when they first started as a volunteer? And if not, retroactive means you can give that pension to anybody that you want. And I remember that, and I took that home to my husband and made him read it, and he was in a position to be able to handle all that kind.
I should indicate that's the last person that signed up to speak. The clock is not controlled up here at all by me. It's controlled over there with equipment over there. Next, we'll take response to public comment. And Mr. Zerlik, several people mentioned the calculator, but I'm not sure that everybody knows what that is. Is there a way that we could show what that is for folks?
Absolutely. I could, I'd like to ask Cindy Stewart to come in and explain on the screen how it can be used. Are you all set, Cindy? Cindy, do you want to give a running commentary as well?
I thought I could take it up here.
Okay.
Right on the homepage, all you have to do is click on the very first bullet that says Property Tax Estimator, and I use the mayor's address. All you do, you type in the address. You do not put city, or you do not put your street, drive, road. All you do is put the address and the street, hit Process Search, and it will show you the taxable value, city taxes, taxable value for 2011, and then you've got your 2011 city taxes at nine point four mils, the change in taxes from ten to eleven. Then you've got the 2011 city taxes with the point seven oh library millage, which makes it ten point nine, and then the library millage cost. So on Canmore, it would be fifty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents, but with the reduction, the overall change is a minus thirteen dollars. I don't know if you want me to throw some more addresses in.
Should we show one that is, mine's a little bit below the average. I think the average taxable value of home is a little bit higher in Troy, because we've been in our house for forty-five years, so that's one of the reasons why mine is so low. And...
There's on the homepage, so you can see where the library millage cost is.
Okay. I think that since it was mentioned by several people, we should tell people what that is, because I don't know that they know about that.
One of the speakers said that I could...
If someone does not have a computer and they want to know this information, do they call the...
They would call our city assessor.
City assessor's office?
Call 524-3311.
524-3311, and they can get that information. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Chair, do you have another question on this?
I do, on this issue. What was characterized by one of our speakers is, well, not an honest broker or biased in some way. It's simply a calculator, is it not? Is it an estimator which just comes, it's factual information?
That's correct.
So I know that I used it to plug in my own address. You could, six-three-nine-two, six-three-nine-two, Elsie. And as you'll see, even, and my house is newer than yours, Madam Mayor, but even for me, on a yes vote, the end result, as you go all the way over, my taxes will go up with a yes vote, four dollars and eighty cents. That's all it will cost me for this whole thing. Some characterized it as, well, it's simply, do you want the library, or do you not want it? And here's the factual cost. At the end of the day, what will it cost you in the bottom line? For Madam Mayor, it will be thirteen dollars less if she votes yes, or maybe four dollars and eighty at the end of the day for my taxes, that much more. But every resident can go ahead and take a look at that, but the idea was to be as clear as possible on this. Another person brought up, may we continue, or should we do this?
Yes, that, thank you.
For clarification, perhaps to outsource the library, I do see that Ms. Director Russ, you can leave that up there, or put another address in if you like. Director Russ is here. Outsourcing the library, if she could respond, how many full-time people do you have left, Kathy, at this time?
As of today, the library has five full-time staff members and fifty-three part-time staff members. On June 30th, though, one of our part-time staff members is leaving, and my head of circulation, who is a full-time staff member, is going on maternity leave. So on July 1st, we will have four full-time staff members and fifty-two part-time staff members.
And even your part-time people have dropped down, have they not?
Well, by way of comparison, on July 1st last year, there were six full-time staff members and sixty-four part-time staff members, so we've gone from seventy employees to fifty-six.
So in terms of the outsourcing idea, could it...
Well, I can tell you about the conversation that I had with George Bateman, and he's Vice President of LSSI, which is basically the premier firm in library outsourcing. And when I spoke with him, he told me three things. He said, and forgive my blunts, but this is what he said to me. He said, Kathy, the first thing your city council needs to decide to do is whether or not it wants a library. The second thing they need to do is decide how much they want to spend on the library. Once they decide that, bid the job, then we'll, we'll send out an RFP and we will bid on the job. And in the course of the conversation, when I told him, you know, he asked me questions about the budget and the staffing level, he actually said to me, Kathy, if you ever need a job, come talk to me because I will hire you anytime. He said, I don't think we can do any better than that. He said, probably where some costs would come would not necessarily be salary, but in deferred comp-type compensation. But in terms of part-time staff, he said, there's no way we can beat what you're doing now and even full-time staff the same.
And I think we had heard that before, that the idea of outsourcing sounds like something. However, you've already cut what you have cut, and to manage the library on simply four people as it's coming up to shortly. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to respond on public comment?
Mayor?
Ms. Zerlik?
Hello.
Oh, Mr. Councilman Horelax, did you have another question?
No, I'm just going to point out, Councilwoman Kerwin said it would cost her four eighty. This chart says it'll cost her ninety-one dollars and four cents, but...
I look at my bottom line of what I'm actually going to end up paying, because that's really what matters to me. So at the end, when I write my check, I'm looking at four dollars and eighty cents. That's really how I look at it. What is the bottom line?
You can look at it all you want, but the issue is, it says right here, ninety-one oh four. Now, the point that I would make if I were you is that's not that much money, okay?
I look at it on what I really write, the same way as I do look at when I'm in a restaurant, what my final bill is. However, it's come together. That's the amount that's going to make a difference. I vote yes, that's the difference in what I'll be paying. That's how I look at it. All of the information is there. So for people who want to parse it across and look at that as my colleague at the end does, I don't. What am I going to pay more this year than I did last year if I vote yes? For me, it's four dollars and eighty cents.
Mayor?
Councilman Horelax?
And if she doesn't vote, well, actually, it doesn't really matter how you vote. It matters how the city votes. And if the city votes no, then you're going to save you six dollars and twenty-four cents. Therefore, the differential, as anybody who has gone to elementary school knows, your cost savings will be ninety, or your cost of the additional point seven mils will be ninety-one dollars and four cents. And honestly, it really doesn't matter if you go to a restaurant or not. I think it's really important that we actually have a conversation about true costs. I think that the issue is whether or not, in your case, ninety-one dollars is too much or too little. I think that's a fair conversation to have, but, you know, I think we need to agree on the terms of the debate before we can debate, and that's been part of the issue in this city as well. I have no qualms about discussing with you whether or not that's a reasonable cost to pay for a library. That's a fine debate to have, but let's at least agree what the terms are. And what you have here in your conversation, you're trying to compare last year's taxes without the additional mill levy to this year's taxes with the additional... year's taxes with the additional mill levy. And if that's the conversation you want to have, then you need to make sure that those that you're talking to know that's what you're doing. And again, that's not how I would recommend that you do it, because people, quite frankly, know that .7 mils is, you know, 70 cents per $1,000 taxable value, and all they have to do is multiply it. And you take that .7, and you multiply it by your 2011 taxable value of 130, and you get the $91.04.
Madam Mayor. Mayor Potem Kerwin?
Again, this is just up to personal choice, and so I'm not debating myself on this. All of the information up there is for everyone, that they may plug in their own address. All of the information will come out, and however they choose to interpret it. The question is, is this information available to our residents? Yes, and particularly for our property owners. For those of us who sit at the table as council members who own property, this is particularly significant. So that's one way that I think that has been very helpful for people, as they look at this issue, want a library, don't want a library, what will the bottom line cost me? And that's how I look at that. So it's not a debate I have with myself. That's just simply how I look at it. What will the library millage cost me, and what will I be writing?
Is there anything else under response to public comment from council members? If not, we'll move on to the...
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a response, Your Honor.
Zerlik?
I wanted to respond to the gentleman who said that management does not lead the way in concessions. I've got eight employee groups. Six are in labor unions. Got a classified group, which is essentially middle management, and then an exempt group, which is, would be considered your management personnel. And about, almost two years ago, the exempt group took a 5% concession, followed by the classified group that was non-union. Since then, and beginning July 1st, the exempt class, the classified class, and four out of six labor unions are going to have a 10% decrease in what we defined as not only base wage, but the combination of base wage, FICA, pension, and workers' compensation. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, let's go to regular business, and we have boards of committee nominations. Under Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, there actually should be five slots. So we need a term expires, another one in there, because one was left off of the list there, of one of the individuals who is still on but going to be replaced. Anyway, so I will move... Pardon?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, we have H1A.
I'm sorry. I'm having an off night, I guess. Thank you, Councilman Howard, I appreciate that, yes. H1A, it was approval of the city council minutes that was a postponed item because things were being corrected.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howanak?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the city clerk and the city manager for postponing this, or allowing us to postpone it, and it looks fine to me. The only thing I noted was, there's a, compared to the resolution I had drafted and handed out, the, there's a sentence that says, "Whereas the city council directed city management to also produce a three-year budget." It's not a major issue, and I don't think I read that, because it wasn't on my printed copy, but I don't know that it necessarily dramatically changes the intent of the resolution. But I'll move to approve the minutes with that amendment.
Do we have a sound?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Howanak, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the minutes for the May 16th meeting as amended. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Howanak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now on to the regular business, mayoral nominations. I move the following names to be nominated for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Reappointment of James Campbell to the term expiring 4/30/2013. Robert Schwartz for the term expiring 4/30/2014. Bruce Wilbering for the term expiring 4/30/2014. Ramsey Delo for term expiring 4/30/2014. And Alan Neal Jr. for term expiring 2014. There should have been five slots there. The slot that Victor Lenovoff served in was not on the list there.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, uh, Mayor Potem Kerwin, pardon me. Discussion? These are forward nominating, and then we'll vote on them at the next meeting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Who was the last person you nominated?
Alan Neal. He's not on...
Not on anybody else.
But he did have it in, requesting that, and I did speak with him.
Okay. When did he put his in? I didn't...
It was in a year or so ago.
2010, I think.
2010.
Right. I note that there's two, should we do both of, both the LDFA and this, and then have the vote?
That would typically how it'd be done, but you could separate it if you'd like.
All right. And then the second is for the Local Development Finance Authority. Most of these do not come up until June 30th, but being that our next meeting is in July, it probably should come up now. The Oakland County Designee, do we know who that might be? It used to be Doug Smith by the county. Did they send us a name? Mr. Miller?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Maureen Cross.
K?
K-R-A-U-S, maybe two S's.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if it's one S or two. All right, Maureen Cross for the Oakland County Designee. For the term expiring 6/30/2014, John Sharp. For the term expiring 6/30/2015, Nick Valente. And for the term expiring 6/30/2015, Robin Beltramini. She is the city council but Troy resident member. Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Fleming?
Madam Mayor, on the school attendee...
Mike Adamczek?
Mike Adamczek.
Yes.
He's no longer there?
No, he is no longer in that position or...
In the state.
In the state.
Right, so you're going to replace him with...
Right. So he should have been replaced, oh, I don't know, six months ago or something. Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor, we were doing some research regarding Mike Adamczek. It is true that he took a job in Chicagoland, but the last time the clerk checked, he was still a registered to vote in the city.
Yes.
I mean, I think we need to verify whether or not he, it's possible that he maintains this address still here, and I'm not sure if that was checked before this meeting.
He accepted the position of being on the LDFA, though, due to his position with the school district. And I just assumed, since he was no longer in that position, and I had heard he took a job out of state, that he was not available for this. So I did not contact him on this, and these others definitely have financial expertise also. Yes.
Just for your information, if you want it for consistency, to keep someone in that position from the school board on this committee, his replacement is Mark Rajeter. R-A-J-T-E-R. Just for your information, if you wanted to be consistent in replacing with someone who was from the school district in that financial position.
All right. For the discussion on the nominations, the vote on the nominations, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howanak?
Yes.
Motion passes, and then those will come up for a vote at the next council meeting. I3 is request for closed session. Would someone move that resolution, please? Madam Mayor. Councilwoman McGinnis?
We have resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268, parent C, labor negotiations.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MLC 15.268, C, labor negotiations. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howanak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Mayor, may we take a brief...
Oh, yes. I had a request to take a five-minute break, and then we'll return to the rest of the agenda.